Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 14 Issaquah City Council Work Session. And tonight, we have a couple of absent council members. Council President Martz and Deputy Council President Batiste are excused tonight. And so there are four of us here currently. We are expecting one more. We have one item on the agenda tonight, the 2019-2020 Financial Forecast. So, let's get started.
Good evening, council members. I am Beth Goldberg, the Finance Director. And I am here tonight to spread good cheer, or not. So, we have quite a few slides to get through. When we went through this at SLT, our Senior Leadership Team, yesterday, one of my Senior Leadership Team colleagues suggested that we could make this really short if I just had a single slide that said, "We have no money." But I'm going to go into a little bit more detail than that tonight. Please feel free to interrupt me as I go if you have questions because I am going to be sharing a lot of data with you this evening. So, to jump in, we're planning on covering a number of topics tonight, give you a little bit of background on our major revenue sources, an overview of the forecast itself, and then we're going to go year by year and look at, in the case of 2018, the year-end results, and then our projections and outlook for the balance of 2019, and then looking at 2020, and then the out-years. Tonight's presentation is going to focus primarily on revenues. It is not the budget. The budget will be transmitted with more details on expenditures in September. So, this is the revenue picture to give you all a foundation as you think about the 2020 proposed budget that we'll be transmitting in just over a month. We're not expecting council to make any decisions tonight. All of this is simply background information for all of you. So, to start off with some background on the revenues, want to provide some background on the major general fund revenue sources. The general fund is supported by four main revenue sources: property tax, which is shown in light green on the pie chart; sales tax, shown in light blue; business and occupation tax, in orange; and utility tax, in dark green. Together, these revenue sources comprise nearly 70% of the general fund revenues. The remaining revenues, 30%, roughly, are what we're calling departmental and other revenue sources. This is a mix of department-generated revenues, pass-through revenues, just a whole myriad of revenues within in this, and they, like I said, comprise 30%, 31% of the general fund budget. In terms of property tax, property tax generates about $9.1 million in revenue based on the 2019 adopted budget. This represents about 17% of our general fund revenue sources. This is a very stable revenue and a reliable revenue, which is good. It's good to have some stable revenues in our mix. The problem is, is the growth rate by state law is capped at 1% prior to the prior year's collections plus the value of new construction. So, the growth potential of this revenue source is extremely limited. We're seeing it grow less than about $300,000 from year to year. So, this growth rate is not enough to keep up with the natural growth rate of expenditures. And you'll often hear cities, local governments in Washington State refer to having structural deficits. This is largely related to the reliance on property tax as a revenue source in Washington State. Since the late '90s, it's been capped in its growth, and particularly governments that are -- there are -- the city of Issaquah is not as dependent on property tax because we have a fairly diverse revenue base as other cities and certainly counties. Those cities and counties that are reliant on property tax, they are facing and have faced for years structural deficits. As we're seeing weakness in some of our other revenues, we're seeing some structural components. And so I just wanted to provide some background on that before we get too much further into the presentation. So, one of the questions is how much property tax actually comes to the city of Issaquah? I imagine, as council members, you hear from various constituents about the size of their property tax bill, perhaps not thrilled with the size of their property tax bill. And one of the things I wanted to point out here is that we only receive a small fraction of the total property tax bills. So, there's -- the chart on this slide is a sample of what a property tax bill might look like for someone with a median assessed value of $815,000. Their typical bill would be -- property tax bill would be just north of $7,500. Of that amount, the city of Issaquah is only receiving $770 of that. Bulk of the revenues are going to schools and school functions, and then a variety of other government functions. So, moving on to sales tax. Sales tax is our largest revenue source, which is somewhat unusual that cities are -- have as much sales tax as we do. So, it makes up a large percentage of our revenues, which is great when sales tax is growing, but it is a highly volatile revenue source that is subject to fluctuation. So, it does leave us a little bit vulnerable in that regard. A bulk of our sales tax comes from retail trade. The next largest category is construction, and then accommodation and food services, so hotels, restaurants, things of that nature. And then the last category is other, which comprises about 20 different sales tax sectors categories makes up that other category. So, sales tax has been a source of considerable strength for the city of Issaquah in recent years. Since 2012, we've seen our sales tax revenues go up by nearly 60% or $6 million, which has been great. It's fueled growth in the city's budget, but again, this is a volatile revenue source. So, you know, we've got to watch it very closely. As this revenue source has grown, and as I go through some other details of this presentation tonight, what you will see is that it's actually -- it's masked some other underlying problems in our budget. And now that we're seeing, just as previewing a little bit, we're seeing some weakness in our sales tax revenue, it's making these other underlying problems much more apparent. Mentioned that the city of Issaquah is highly dependent on sales tax. This chart shows the percentage of the city of Issaquah's budget that is derived from sales tax, about 32%. If you look at these other cities that are depicted on this chart, you will see that the city of Issaquah is near the top in terms of reliance on sales tax. At the low end are Sammamish and Mercer Island. These are cities without a large commercial base. So, they -- these are examples of two cities that are very dependent on the property tax. We are less so. So, we've had some more flexibility in recent years, but again, because of the volatility in sales tax, it does leave us more vulnerable to fluctuations in the economy. Similar to property tax, you probably get questions of how much of the sales tax is coming to the city of Issaquah. This chart, again, is showing that the city of Issaquah is only receiving a small fraction of the total amount levied -- sales tax amount levied. Current sales tax rate is 10%. This is fairly standard for cities in our region, and we're only receiving 0.85% of that 10% sales tax rate. The rest is going to the state, King County, and then a small amount to Sound Transit. Business and occupation tax represents about 10% of our general fund revenues, about $5.5 million. This is a gross receipts tax on any individual or entity doing business in the city of Issaquah, regardless of whether they're located here. A bulk of our BNO tax is coming from retailing, and then it's spread among a number of other categories: wholesaling, manufacturing, and other business categories. So, BNO taxes -- tax rates vary throughout the region. In 2014, the Ad hoc Finance Committee spent quite a bit of time looking at the BNO tax and did recommend a series of increases. The council, when they were considering the recommendation, decided to make some adjustments in those rates. And so the column highlighted in green is what was adopted by the city council in 2015 and remain are BNO tax rates. Wanted to point out here that it was lower than the ad hoc committee's recommendation. And there are -- there's a variety of methodologies throughout the region. Some jurisdictions are charging higher BNO tax rates than us, some are charging lower. But as the city council is looking at our resources, one message that I want to make sure that you all know is that we're not maxed out in our revenue options. BNO is revenue that we do have an opportunity, if the council were inclined now or later, is a revenue that we could -- or a rate that we could look at. Then our final major general fund revenue source is the utility tax. Like BNO, this generates about 10% of our general fund revenues. And want to point out that this is different from the utility rates. This is a tax on utility bills. So, the city operates three utilities: water, sewer, and stormwater. We're only charging utility tax on water. The utility rates captured here are largely utilities delivered by people other than the city, so electricity, telephone, solid waste, cable. Again, this generates about 10% of our general fund revenues, but this is a revenue source that has been a source of weakness in the revenue forecast, and I will go through those details a little bit later in the presentation. In terms of utility tax rates, the chart displayed on the right here shows that we're charging 6% on electricity, natural gas, solid waste, and telephone. We've charged utility taxes on these utilities since the late '60s, and the current rates have been in place since 1992. So, some fairly long-term rates. The items listed below the line, cable TV, water, sewer, and stormwater, are utilities for which we are charging less than 6%. And I'm pointing this out here because most jurisdictions that are charging utility tax are charging uniform rates for all of their utilities. So, the city of Issaquah is a little bit unusual in that we're charging lower rates on some of our utilities. I will also point out that the 6% that we're charging on electricity, natural gas, solid waste, and telephone is the maximum allowable without voter approval. You could go beyond that. It would require a vote of the people. Again, most jurisdictions, if they're charging utility tax, are at the 6% rate, but there are examples of jurisdictions that have gone to the voters and have sought higher rates. So, I will pause there before we pivot to the next section. Make sure there aren't any questions. No questions? So, okay, so now we're going to move into the actual forecast itself. Before I go into the details, I want to point out that forecasts are variable. I think I have said to the council before that I can guarantee that the forecast will be wrong. By their nature, forecasts are estimates based on a set of data. And what you want to do when evaluating a forecast is, is it in line with trends? And does it seem reasonable based on trends that you are seeing? And one of the things that I think you will see as I go through this forecast is, some of the estimates that were made in prior budgets were estimates that were not -- that were clearly out of step with the trends that we were seeing. So, I will -- you'll hear me talk about that throughout the presentation. I will say that this forecast is particularly challenging because there's a lot of economic uncertainty out there. There's -- there are signs that the economy is slowing. Today, there was news that, for the first time since 2007, we're seeing what they call an inverted bond market, where the amount paid on 10-year treasuries is less than two-year treasuries. It happened today for the first time since 2007. That's often a predictor of a recession, although not necessarily an immediate recession, but it has, in modern history, predicted recessions. So, we're kind of in a funny time trying to predict what is going to happen. This forecast is making no assumptions that we're going to have a recession because the timing depth are extremely hard to predict. Rather, this forecast is looking at, what are we seeing in the trends and what is a reasonable assumption based on those trends? I also want to point out that during last year's budget process, it was the first budget process for our mayor as mayor and our former city administrator as city administrator. And that process was illuminating for them in that it showed them upfront and personal as they very much had their hands in developing the budget, that we didn't have access to the data that we needed to make informed decisions. And going through that experience, they set a priority to start to really dig into the numbers this year. And so that's been our charge since last fall, and what you are seeing is the results of that work. It's not always good news, but it is, I think, an important exercise that we have been through because I think we're on more solid footing as we move forward. So, with that precursor, I'll jump into the details. To -- Councilmember Goodman often says, "Don't bury the headline." So, we're not burying the headline here. We're saying what the headline is upfront. And the headline is that we are seeing a deterioration in the city's revenue picture since last year, and we are forecasting a $1.3 million budget gap shortfall in 2019 and a $5.2 million gap in 2020. And through the rest of the presentation, I'm going to go through and explain how we have come to these conclusions and why. In terms of an overview of the dynamics we're seeing, first of all, sales tax, which is, as I mentioned earlier, our largest source of revenue, is -- has been declining in the first months of this year. So, that is a source of concern, particularly since it's been the source of growth over the last six years. Utility tax, which is our fourth biggest source of revenue, is also declining. I've talked about this a little bit in the past, where, for example, the utility tax on telephones has been declining because people aren't using landlines as much as they used to. So, this has been a source of weakness. The two revenue sources that have been growing are property tax and BNO, but their growth has been extremely modest and not nearly enough to compensate for the weakness in those other two revenue sources. And then last, the department and other revenues. It appears as if those previous assumptions were just overly optimistic and not in line with what actual data was telling us, and I'll go through some of those details in a moment. So, for the 2018 results, want to walk through that to set the stage. We have -- we're getting prepared to start the audit on our 2018 books. So, the numbers I'm reflecting here are unaudited, but they do reflect what we will be reporting to the state auditor's office as our 2018 results. What you will see in the green column is that revenues came in ever so slightly under what was budgeted, and then there was -- and expenditures came in even more under what was budgeted. We ended up spending about 96% of the budgeted amount of expenditures, which is allowing us, the combination of, well, mainly it's the underspend, is allowing us to add to fund balance, $1.5 million. So, we are adding $1.5 million to our fund balance, which will leave us with an ending fund balance of $19.5 million, which represents about 40% of our expenditures. You'll recall that our financial policies require us or set a goal of having a fund balance between 15% and 20%. So, we are ending 2018 well in excess of the fund balance target. In terms of the revenues, I mentioned that the revenues were -- came in slightly, about $400,000 under what was budgeted. And what this chart is showing here in green is the revenue, the only revenue that is growing, sales tax. The ones depicted in orange are what I'm calling stable revenues, property tax and BNO tax. And then the ones shown in red are the ones that are declining, utility tax and department revenues. And you'll see, particularly for utility tax, a pretty steep decline from what was assumed in the adopted budget. You'll notice that the 2017 actuals were $4.5 million, but the adopted budget assumed $5 million. We actually only collected $4.3 million, so not only less than what was budgeted, but also less than the 2017 actuals. So, that -- I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. In terms of utility tax, the actual 2018 utility tax revenues are down 12.3% from the 2018 adopted levels and 4.3% from the 2017 actuals. You will see that -- and actually, that's not showing up super well on the screen there, but the only two revenue sources in this category that are growing are solid waste and city water. The problem is, is they represent a very small segment of this revenue category. The others that are theoretically shaded in gray, but you can't tell on the screen here, are the ones that are declining. And the big problem here, previewing into 2019, is that despite this trend of lower revenue collections in this category, the 2019 budget actually assumes an increase. So, out of step with what the trends are showing us. In terms of what is driving these decreases, the big one is telephone, which is down 12.3% from 2017. Again, as I mentioned, people aren't using landlines as much. And then you could say, "Yeah, but people are using cell phones more. Why not cell phones?" If you look at your cellphone bill, only a teeny-tiny portion of your cellphone bill is for the actual phone. The bulk of your phone charge is going to be for data. We are prohibited from charging utility tax on the data portion of your cellphone. Over time, the data charges have increased. We're not able to capture revenue from that. So, this has been a declining revenue source for -- I can't speak to the city of Issaquah's experience, but I know this was something that we were talking about when I was at the city of Seattle in 2010 of weakness in this category. Can't say how this was forecast in the past, but my sense is, is it was done at a bottom-line level and not looking at the actual detail, and then it was masking weakness in this area. The other section in this category that I want to talk about is natural gas, which is also falling off considerably. We believe this is related to a drop-off in the price of natural gas commodity prices. So, as natural gas prices drop, your natural gas costs are going down, and the tax is on that total bill. So, that is likely what is driving that decrease. And then I think there's a question.
I just wondered if we know if the amount of natural gas is being consumed is increasing, or if there's any information on that. I guess, just how do we know that it has to do with cost versus amount?
We don't exactly. I mean, we do know that commodity prices are dropping. So, that is an undercurrent that we're aware of. In terms of use, it's hard to say, and we are doing some digging into these numbers to see if we can figure that out. Electricity, people are using, as people use more energy-efficient appliances, that might be contributing to the drop in off in this. But again, these are two, actually, where we are doing some digging into what might be going on because the drop-offs seem fairly significant. So, now, moving on to departmental revenues. And you've heard me talk about this a little bit before, but I want to go into a little bit more detail. So, bottom line, departmental revenues are coming in 800,000 less than what was budgeted in all of the categories except for miscellaneous, underperformed relative to what was assumed in the budget, some of which were pretty significant. So, the question is, why did they underperform? Unfortunately, there's not a complete uniform answer, but similar to utility tax, it appears as if there wasn't a thorough examination of the details within each one of these revenue categories to see what was going on. So, when at the strategic plan council meeting in early June, I talked about the other taxes category within other taxes or a variety of revenue sources, one of which is a tax on what I was describing at that June meeting as the Pac-Man tax, which is, it's actually not a Pac-Man tax. It's, we've since done some more examination of what it is. It's the tax on those grabber games. I understand there's one outside of Fred Meyer, and the finance team was actually talking about going there yesterday to do a field trip to help a little bit, but we ran out of time. But that grabber game in front of Fred Meyer, there's a tax on the people that paid to play that. In 2018, we collected $342 thanks to people playing said grabber game. Yet, the revenues built into the budget assumed we would bring in $18,000. Little bit off. And then it gets worse looking ahead to 2019. That $18,000 was inflated to $20,000. Why? Cannot explain, but we need to correct that. So, as we're bringing these forecasts down, we have spent time going line by line through each one of the revenues embedded within these roll-ups to understand what is going on, what is real, what is not real. We've been collaborating with the departments on this work. A lot of them were not aware what was assumed in here, so it's been very helpful to have that dialogue between finance and the departments so that we can all be on the same page about what we are assuming. So, finding quite a few problems embedded in here, but the work that we have done over the last couple of months to try and unravel this, I think, are going to serve us much better. Another example that I will give you within the public safety and enforcement category, there was a revenue line for LEF1, Special Funding. LEF is the law enforcement officer's pension program. $130,000 was assumed for this revenue. We don't know what it is. We've never -- we can't find a record of collecting the revenues, but yet $130,000 was assumed in the budget. So, needed to zero that out. So, there are examples, there are examples within each one of these categories of things we can't explain. Some of them we can, but things we can't explain. And so, again, we've gone line by line to look at each revenue and do a better job of predicting what we can collect for both 2019 and then anticipating what is likely for 2020. Another category that I'll talk about is Another category that I'll talk about is grants. We get a number of grants that support a variety of activities in the general fund. We, the city redid the chart of accounts last year. And as part of that process collapsed all, we used to be able to align revenues by department, collapsed them all into one. So there's now a grants category. But unless you're sitting around a conference room with various departments at the table, you can't tell within that what is a police grant, what is a parks grant. And so we've got that documentation now. And as we're doing work to update the chart of accounts, we're going to go back to a departmental structure. So the police know what their grants are. Parks know what their grants are. So unfortunately, there's not great news here. But I do think that this has been a worthwhile exercise for us to go through to make sure we're on the right track. There is one bright spot in this, miscellaneous revenues. And there are a variety of things going on in here. But for example, we issue passports on behalf of the state department. We get a small fee for doing that. We've seen strength in those revenues. We've seen strength in our interest earnings that are reflected in here. So it's not all gloom and doom. Unfortunately, the bright spots aren't enough to offset where we are seeing the gloom and doom.
Before you march on?
Yes.
Can you go back?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. So the one that I'm curious about, because I was looking at just absolute dollars, not necessarily percentages. And so you talked a little bit miscellaneous. And it seems like it's a good story, but it's a significantly different number. It's not just off by a little bit. So there's something going on there, and I know you're looking into that. But what are cost allocations and transfers in?
Yeah, so cost allocations and transfers in. And I'm just pulling up my notes here if you will give me one moment here. So cost allocation, I'll speak to cost allocations first. And the cost allocations, we do allocate some of our costs, so general fund costs that are being provided on behalf, for example, of the utilities. And this is another one where there was a number in there that we can't explain. For, I think, 2017 and 2018, I believe it was carried into 2019, assumed 1.32 million in cost allocations. But yet, only 846,000 was collected. The 846 appears to be a good number. We can't explain where the 1.32 million came from. But yet, it's been carried forward year after year. So it's another correction that we cannot explain the origin of. In terms of transfers in, there again, sort of transfers, it's another transfer category, but that's not where the problem lies. The problem is lying in the cost allocation category.
Yeah, it just seems to me, since cost allocations are an internal thing, we should be pretty accurate on those?
We should, we should. And again, I don't think it's that we weren't accurate. I think that the budget is assuming a number that we just, we can't explain. That said, our overall cost allocation approach is something that we haven't looked at in a while. And it is something that we want to take a look at in 2020. We don't have time to look at it now, but that is a work program item to make sure that we're aligning with best practices on how we're allocating costs. So we will be working on that in 2020.
Thank you.
So I've got another one. Planning permits and licensing. Is that suggesting, that decrease suggesting recession and lower build? Or do we have a sense of what that is?
That drop off appears to be related to the number of applicants seeking expedited reviews. They will pay extra to have an expedited review of their permit. And then we use that money to pay for external resources to help us do that expedited review. So it's their pass through dollars. That is where the weakness is in that revenue.
It would be interesting to break that out at some point, to understand what really is revenue versus what is just pass through that we're not going to see.
Yeah, I mean, it's the pass through dollars.
Yeah.
And again, I'm seeing puzzled looks. Again, I guess the other thing I would say is this is another example of where the communication between the department and finance was not good when these were built. Because as we've been talking to DSD of like, you know, what's going on with their revenues? They're like, you know, this is what we submitted to finance. What's in here is not. So I, you know, can't explain why, but that, that's what we have uncovered.
So I think I was one of the ones with the puzzled look. So I'm just wondering if some of this is transfer, or some of this is pass through, and some of this is revenue. And I think it would be helpful to know what is, which is which.
It's revenue that people are paying for the expedited reviews that we would then turn around and spend to have the expedited review. So we're also seeing on the expenditure side, less being spent on those expedited reviews?
Right, but so would we account then the entire difference between 2017 actual and 2018 actual for planning permits and licensing? That entire differences would all be pass through revenue in either case?
The difference between?
That 20% difference?
The 20% is the change from adopted.
Okay.
So that's what that changes. Yes, there is a drop off in 17. And to be honest, I haven't looked at the 2017 detail to say what was making up that 6.6%. So what I'm speaking of is the delta between what was assumed in the 2018 adopted budget and then what we saw in the actuals. If there is a desire for us to go back and look at what was going on in the 6.6 million for 2017, you know, happy to do that. But that's not what I'm speaking about right now.
Okay.
I think what would be interesting, and maybe where Councilmember Hines is going, is when we have a situation where it's not really affecting us because we have an equal, if you will, debit and credit? Doesn't matter. What's of concern is where we have a declining revenue and we don't have an offsetting cost. And if we could highlight those, that would be helpful.
Yes.
And also provide some magnitude on the size of the problem.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so you might have forgotten, but a couple slides ago, there was a section of green, and that was sales tax. And sales tax was the bright spot in 2018. But because I am completely incapable of delivering good news, I'm going to rain on even that little bit, that little bit of good news to say that sales tax did exceed budget in 2018. And that's great. But when you dig into the details, there actually was a bit of a warning sign. And that is the month of December. If you will notice the month of December at the end, you see a significant drop off in December sales tax collections in 2018 relative to 2017. If you look back at our sales tax history month by month, back to 2006, what we found is this is actually the third worst performing December in that period of time. The other two circumstances when this happened were in 2010 and 2000, hang on, 2010, I don't have this memorized, and 2008. And in each of those years, the year following, we saw a decline in annual sales tax collections in the prior year. So this, looking at that data point and knowing what we are seeing that I'll talk about momentarily for 2019, this actually could be a predictor of trouble ahead. So moving on to 2019, shown here on the right is our revised projection. And rather than tying this to the 2019 adopted budget, we're tying it to the 2019 revised budget, which includes the Burisma adjustments that the council made earlier this year. Because that's going to represent a little bit more of an apples to apples comparison. What you are seeing based on the projection we're now developing using data through June 30th, 2019, is that we're seeing, we're projecting that revenues are going to be 3.3 million lower than what we had anticipated at the time that the Burisma legislation was adopted. And the change in the Burisma legislation was the revenue that was coming in, the bond revenue that was coming in to pay for the purchase. And then similarly, are forecasting expenditures to come in a little bit lower, basically using the same spending patterns as was the case last year. So spending 96% of the budget. So when you look at the revenues coming in lower and then expenditures coming in lower and netting those out, it represents about a $1.3 million hit to the general fund. Is depicted in the far right column up here. The middle column, it looks like it's $5.7 million. But the reason why I'm only talking about 1.3 million is that 4.5 million of that 5.7 was already assumed when the council adopted the Burisma legislation. So you might recall that the Burisma acquisition was paid for with two main revenue sources. One, we sold bonds for half of the cost. And then council decided to pull funds for the other half of the costs, about 3.823 million, out of fund balance. And that strategy was developed because we're anticipating grants coming in. And so as we were receiving those grants, the idea was we would replenish fund balance. So as we're looking at the bottom line impact on 2019, in total, it would be a $5.7 million hit to fund balance. But 4.5 million of that was already assumed. The new news here tonight, based on revised revenue and expenditure projections, is an additional hit to fund balance of $1.3 million. When you roll that through the ending fund balance, we, assuming these projections hold, would end 2019 with 13.7 million in fund balance, which represents about 23% of fund balance or of expenditures still in excess of that 20% target.
Does that factor in grant funding that we're anticipating? Or is that just gravy on top?
The grant funding will be gravy on top. And I've got a slide, a few slides ahead, where I will show the impact of that. Okay, and then this slide is just another accounting of the difference between the decisions that council already made in adopting the budget in terms of use of fund balance versus the new picture here. Wanted to show it in just a slightly different way. Back to the colorful chart. You will recall when I was showing this chart for 2018 that sales tax was shown in green for 2018 because it was growing relative to what was assumed in the budget. But in this chart for 2019, it is now red. And that is because the data we've received to date shows that us, that this revenue source, at least through the first five months of this year, have been declining. So we don't have any green on, except for the heading, but none of the revenues are highlighted in green. Everything is either orange, property tax, BNO tax, which are continuing to come in as anticipated, fairly stable. And then the red are now sales tax, utility tax, and the departmental revenues. So to go through the sources of the revenue concerns, I'm going to start with sales tax. We have data for the first five months of this year through May. There's a two-month lag on when we receive sales tax data from the state. So May is the most recent month for which we have data. We've seen declines in sales tax receipts relative to 2018 in four of the five months of this year. When April came in higher, I was hoping that it was a sign that January, February, March were a little bit of an anomaly. When May came in lower, it was like, maybe not. So we are seeing through May, a 4.1% decline in sales tax revenues relative to the same months in 2018. In terms of where we're seeing these declines, we're seeing them in, and I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the biggest sectors from which we derive sales tax are retail trade, construction, and accommodation and food service. We're seeing declines in each one of those sectors through May relative to the same period in 2018, led by weakness in the retail trade sector. In terms of how we are projecting then sales tax through the balance of the year, looked at sales tax data through, or since 2006. And for data geeks like me, it's actually kind of interesting how relatively consistent collections through May are as a predictor of what we're going to see through the rest of the year. Aside from a blip in 2011 and in 2008, you're actually seeing that orange line on this chart fairly consistently hover in the 37%, 38% range. And it does actually average 37.8%. So seeing how consistent this tends to be, we're using that 37.8% of collections through May to predict what we will collect through the rest of the year. And when you do that, it shows that we will bring in less revenue in 2019 than was budgeted. We're estimating about an $800,000 hit. I will say that we added a little bit more. We added about $200,000 hit beyond that 37% just to be conservative because of the uncertainty in the economic conditions. So we do have an added bit of conservatism built into this that we feel is a responsible thing to do at this time. But it does represent an $800,000 hit to our revenues, about a 4.7% reduction from what was assumed in the budget. Moving on to utility tax, seeing the trends that we saw in 2018 continue into 2019, we're seeing declines in collections for each one of the categories except for sales tax. So electricity is continuing to decline. Natural gas is continuing to decline. Cable TV is declining. Telephone declining 16% and a slight decrease, although it's kind of a rounding error in water. So overall, about a 5% drop off in 2019, January to May, relative to where we were January to May in 2018. In terms of projecting utility tax for the balance of the year, again, looked at back historically of seasonal variability and seasonal collections in these different revenue sources. For example, electricity, people are using more electricity when it's darker, when it's colder. So you'll see more collections in the winter months than you will in the summer. So you don't want to flatline any of this. You want to look at the seasonal variability. So we applied that to project out what we can anticipate receiving for the rest of the year. And when you do that, you're seeing drop offs in most of the categories. Solid waste, which actually has been growing, we're actually taking it down a little bit for this projection because it appears as if the amount assumed, if you look in the middle there, in the 2019 budget is a little bit aggressive relative to what we had collected in 2018 and 2017. And then certainly, the actual data, when you project that out, would suggest we need to take that one down ever so slightly. to take that one down ever so slightly. So in total, we're projecting $4.2 million from this revenue source in 2019 relative to just north of $5 million that was assumed in the adopted budget. So about $800,000, $900,000 off, representing about an 18% decline from what was assumed in the budget. In terms of departmental revenues, the problems that I talked about that we saw for 2018, just in the interest of time, kind of continued into 2019. So as we went through and unraveled what was going on, we made similar corrections for 2019. We are miscellaneous is a revenue that we are anticipating growing, similar reasons, passports are strong, our interest earnings have been relatively strong. In terms of the shared and intergovernmental revenues, that is largely representing pass-through revenues, so like liquor excise tax, things of that nature are shown in that roll-up category.
Member Walsh?
I'm concerned about the planning permits and licensing and Parks and Recreation, which showing year-to-date through June are down dramatically. Are those cases where we see seasonality on that?
So the planning permits and licensing is, it's similar problems to what we were seeing in 2018, is there were numbers in here that were assumed in the 2019 adopted budget that the department, if you look at what they have for their documentation, it just doesn't match up. So...
I'm trying to understand how you would go from 1.8 year-to-date through June to a year-end projection of 5.5.
That's because there's, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. That is, they're anticipating some revenues for like Costco permits, and I believe there are some school district permits that are coming online, so some big projects with out-of-ordinary revenues accompanying them are anticipated to come in the latter half of the year. That's what's driving that difference.
But that does still suggest that looking maybe forward into 2020, that the 5.5 might not continue?
Correct. So what we did for planning permits and licensing in particular, as we were sitting down with DSD, we looked at, okay, what's sort of your natural business levels, your normal course of business? And then we looked at, okay, what are the outliers? We were calling them in this discussion, what are the whales? You know, what are you anticipating as the whales coming in? And we built those in. So it's a combination of, you know, what do you expect sort of day-to-day current course and speed business? And then what are you anticipating as outliers? And that's how we built that forecast.
Okay, and how about Parks and Recreation is at .6, and you're projecting 1.8?
Yes, so Parks and Recreation is a different story. So Parks and Recreation moved to a new online system for registering for classes. They moved from class to Perfect Mind. And Perfect Mind allows Parks to collect payments for their classes, their recreation programs, summer camps, on an install payment basis. The old system allowed, didn't allow for that. So for example, in March, they would be collecting the full payment for summer camps in March. So you were seeing, if you look at last year, you'll see higher amounts earlier in the year. What you're seeing here is that because of these payment plans, smaller amounts coming in than would have come in in previous years. And then as the summer camps are happening, again, this was through 6/30, so you know, that's leaving two months of the summer of payments to roll in. And so we went through and projected that out. Similarly, I understand basketball is a big thing in the fall and winter. We're going to see that kind of variation with that as well. So we worked with Parks. Parks went through and said, okay, how are they anticipating the revenues to flow in? And that's what we built the forecast on. Okay, so to wrap up 2019, just want to show here, this slide shows the net impacts of the revenue changes that we have just talked about. $3.3 million hit to the revenues but are offset by some anticipated under expenditures. So we're anticipating overall a $1.3 million shortfall for 2019. Councilmember Ray, you were asking about grants earlier. This slide, for fund balance forecasting purposes, does build in what we are anticipating as a grant this year coming in from King County Conservation Futures. We are anticipating receiving $5.3 million in that grant funding of that amount. We will have to pay $3 million to Trust for Public Lands for the amount of, that they loaned us to complete that transaction. So when all is said and done, once we receive this grant later this year, we will net $2.3 million. And the intent was that this would go and replenish the fund balance that was used to pay for the acquisition of that property. So when you roll that through, we would end 2019 with an ending fund balance of $16 million. It was, I'm going to have to do some math in my head, it was 2.3 million lower when we looked at it before, but representing 23% of expenditures up from, I believe it was 23% pre-grant. So fund balance picture still healthy, and once we receive the grant, improving. And then I will also say that there were other grants that Parks is intending to go after from the state, and we're anticipating those for 2021. So we still might have additional revenues, but this is what we know at this point. So you might be asking what we are going to be doing to manage this $1.3 million shortfall for this year. We did start off the year conservatively and delayed hiring some positions, delayed starting some programs. As we are looking at these numbers, we are continuing to hold positions vacant and adjusting the scope of current projects to hopefully generate some additional underspend. These discussions are ongoing. I can't quantify them now, but the work is underway to do that. We are also anticipating the likelihood of some budget amendments that we will be transmitting along with the budget, largely for things that we have talked to council about as the year has unfolded. We are looking at whether budget amendments are needed for all of those categories, and I'll give you one example related to me. You'll recall in April, I was presenting on the Finance Department budget and some consulting resources that we were bringing on. And at the time, I thought we could absorb it because of some vacancies that we had. As we're looking at the Finance Department budget, we can absorb it. So we will not be coming with a budget amendment for those amounts. We'll be accommodating those within existing resources. So that's one example of how we're looking at things. So moving on to 2020, looking ahead, and you'll start to see some similarities in these charts. Looking at our outlook for 2020, the summary is we are projecting that revenues will continue to come in lower. And in this case, the comparison point on, for this, while it shows the King County grant in there, the more appropriate comparison for the revenues is actually the adopted amounts because the outlook with the King County grant includes Burgsma revenues and expenditures that we know are one times an outlier. So if you look at the 2019 adopted as the comparison point, that's more apt. Based on the revenue projections that I'll go through momentarily, we're anticipating $47.8 million in revenues, which is lower than the $52 million that was assumed in the 2019 budget. Similarly, expenditures, well, not similarly, expenditures, we're assuming for baseline purposes, this is not assuming any adds, will be flat. This includes growth for salaries, benefits, things of that nature, and then backing out one-time costs that were included in the budget. So assuming flat expenditures, and then that generates a gap of $5.2 million. If council did nothing to address this $5.2 million gap, which I would not advise, but if council did nothing about it, we actually would still be within our fund balance target if everything held by the end of 2020. Again, not advising it, but run that through. We'd be right at 20%, but it does not leave a lot of margin.
I have a question. So you said if council doesn't address it, is council the only one that can make decisions that would reflect changes to the budget?
Yeah, so the mayor proposes and the council adopts. So...
But aren't there internal things that can be done? No matter how small, I mean, I would think...
Yeah, I mean, we could hold positions vacant, but you also have a series of expectations of services that I think you would want us to deliver. So we would want some buy-off on how we were addressing that. You know, I think that's, you know, we will be presenting options, and council's the...
Adopter of those.
Adopter of those, and then it's up to us to follow that direction. If council didn't adopt a budget, you know, would we try and, I think it would just get a little strange. We would want council to weigh in.
If I can add to that. So for the mayor's proposed budget, we are working on that and putting that together, and we are trying to reduce that gap and present to you, propose to you, something that looks a little different than a $5.2 million gap. So through those internal measures that you're talking about, adjusting expenditures, I think as part of the budget process, we also anticipate looking at revenues, as Beth has said, that we have weakening revenues. So all those options will be presented with the proposed budget, and that's when council can have, we would expect council to have deliberations and look at adopting a balanced budget.
I feel a follow-up. Councilwoman Winter, member Winter's time?
I appreciate that, and Andrea, I appreciate that because the council, if the council, whatever the comment you made a moment ago, we're in this together. We're totally in this together. And me seeing this now, seeing these numbers, I, to get a heads up about a week ago, phone call, you know, there's so much trust and faith that we have to put into the staff. We've done that again and again. Boy, to have this Burgsma as a different number, a different line here, I appreciate that. That was a recent big deal where we're very dependent upon the numbers that we got and the projections and what we were going to, and it was a little bit of an act of faith in there. So I do appreciate you pulling this out, but this, we're in this together. Andrea, this, these, you know, I could have asked 100 questions earlier in this meeting already, but I'm just going to go back to the headline. Thank you for saying it that way. Like, that's just, we didn't, thanks for not burying the headline. That's a big number. And we're going to do this together, and we're going to do a balanced budget. And I think, and right now, new revenue is not, I'm not interested in. That's where I'm at.
So moving right along, and I didn't want, to be clear, I'm not implying that we were going to do nothing. I just, we need to know what the starting point is, and so I wanted to make this clear that this is the starting point. There is not an intention of not doing anything, but we need to know where we're starting from. So moving on to then the details behind these numbers, again, here's that chart again. No green, continuing to be concerned about sales tax, utility tax, and departmental revenues, and continuing to see stability in property tax and business and occupation In terms of sales tax, we are, as part of this forecast, recommending that we hold sales tax flat. If you look back through the history of sales tax collections since 2006, there are only two-year, we've only seen one period with two consecutive years of declines in sales tax, and that was 2008 and 2009 during the height of the Great Recession, the longest, deepest recession that we've had since the Great Depression, likely, hopefully, not replicated. So typically, if we're seeing a contraction, it's much shorter-lived. So what we are recommending here is that we hold sales tax flat for 2019 relative to 2019 revised. In terms of utility tax, again, the trends, if you look at 2017, 2018 actuals and what we're projecting for 2019 year-end, you're seeing largely a steady decline in most of these revenues. So we have no reason to believe that those declines wouldn't continue. So we are looking at those average changes over the last two years and using that to project out 2020. When you do that, we would anticipate collecting just over $4 million, which is a little bit less than the 2019 year-end projection of $4.2 million. Departmental revenues, again, some of these themes continue through, have gone through, taken advantage of the work that we've been doing with the departments to better understand what is going on in these revenues, and then using that to project 2020. And when you do that, are anticipating about a $2 million drop-off from the 2019 year-end projections. Again, here's a summary of the impacts, about $5.2 million. Actually seeing a little bit of growth, thanks to holding sales tax steady, and then growth in property tax and BNO, a little bit of growth from the year-end projection on the big four revenues, but that $2 million drop-off that we talked about on the departmental and other revenues. In terms of strategies for addressing the $5.2 million shortfalls, the mayor's proposed budget is not final at this point. We are still working to develop that. We are exploring a combination of revenue and expenditure options. On the revenue side, we are looking at, we've got some banked capacity that we haven't utilized on the property tax side. It represents about $125,000. We're looking at possibly using that, possibly looking at increases in the utility tax, possibly looking at BNO rate increases, and then potentially increases in user fees. Likely not to be proposing increases in all of these, but we are evaluating these options. As we look to these revenues, an increase in any one of these revenues would offset and, you know, somewhat mitigate our reliance on sales tax, which hopefully would bring a little bit of stability. But we recognize that we can't do this on revenues alone, and we are working very closely with the departments to look at expenditure reduction options and focusing particularly on non-mandated services. We're looking to identify other funding sources. So back to your cost allocation comment, there are some things that we haven't cost-allocated like HR, that we are looking at cost allocating as a way of preserving services. But, you know, we're also trying to protect as many jobs as we can in services. So, you know, this is a difficult exercise. Let me just, I know there's some questions. And then the last thing, and then I'll pause for a minute. We are looking at, you know, some of the strategic plan goals and whether we are able to implement all of the things contemplated in the strategic plan. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Councilwoman Winter's time?
Two comments. First, I should have said last... First, I should have said last time that I do appreciate, and I can see the additional work and the increased insight, and maybe kind of, I don't know how to describe it, but you are getting more accurate information than you had before. We've looked at past numbers. You've explained to me, or you explained here today, where we had past budget numbers basis we didn't know. We now have some reality, done a reality check, getting, we've done a correction going forward. So I really do appreciate this greater insight, working with maybe more accurate information to work with. Very much appreciated. Having said that, I'm not comfortable with your plan on forecasting a flat sales tax based upon everything that you've said earlier in this evening. Even though it's revised down, you're using your Magic May number, whatever, to hold that flat based upon what I've heard makes me question the wisdom of that.
Up or down?
I got a sense it was trending down.
It potentially is trending down.
So forecast, so budgeting-wise, I'm not comfortable with forecasting flat year-over-year.
So we could, we, forecasting is doing a little bit of tea leaf reading. We, if you look at the past, the, you know, in recent history where we've seen the two consecutive years was during the Great Recession. That, I would argue, is, was an anomaly, hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime event for us. You know, the Depression was a once-in-a-lifetime event for a generation ahead of us. The Great Recession hopefully is ours. So if you look at that, we have not had two consecutive years of decline. But we're also not in a recession right now, and I don't know if we are going to be in one, but when you turn on the news and you hear of the headwinds, yeah, we might be vulnerable. So it's a bit of a judgment call. We could, you know, certainly be more conservative, but, you know, that's a bigger gap. There may also be bright spots. There may be other revenues that we aren't anticipating coming in. So I think the point, the point I'm trying to make with the forecast is we're making an estimate at a moment in time, and then it is the responsibility of me and my team advising the city administrator, advising the mayor to say, okay, are we deviating and how quickly are we responding? One of the reasons why we're in the soup we're in right now is we haven't been quick to respond when we've deviated from the forecast. So we could take it down, and it might be right, it might be wrong. You know, it's up to us to monitor it, so...
Understood. So we don't know what all the signals are. They're going to tell us what are going to happen in the retail area. That's, there's a lot of forces that are difficult for us to predict. We do have a little bit more of a pipeline when it comes to construction, another large area. You are already projecting those as being down themselves. So I, that's, my comment a moment ago was more of, okay, I heard you, flat. When you say construction and retail are down, and they are down significantly, then a conservative budgeter in me says, you know, it might not be wise to budget flat revenue and sales tax for those reasons. I don't have any more information to base it upon, but you're putting it together structurally. I know you're working it. It's tough where you are right now, flat. I don't advise it.
Okay. Okay, so looking at the out-years, the financial management policies do require us to look out five years, and forecasting is speculative even for one year. It's even more speculative for five years. What you will find most jurisdictions are doing are taking some fairly broad brushes at the out-years because, you know, there are too many variables in play. So what we're doing here is looking at revenues, and I'll go through the details in the next slide, and expenditures. And what we're seeing through these forecasts is that expenditure, the rate of expenditure growth will exceed the rate of revenue growth and will continue to see shortfalls. What I will say about this slide is this is cumulative, and cumulative in that the numbers roll through. So if we make, if we are successful in closing the 2020 gap, which, you know, I'm hearing some interest in doing, that will reduce the size of, and that they're ongoing budget changes, that will reduce the size of the gap in the out-years. And I will show you in, I think, two slides ahead, I will model that out for you. But the main message with this slide is that we are forecasting that revenue growth will continue to be subdued and that expenditure growth, the rate of growth on expenditures will exceed that rate of growth on revenues. In terms of out-year forecast assumptions, for property tax, we're assuming about a 3% increase from year-over-year. This is what the trends have shown us, so we are building that into the forecast. Sales tax are projecting a 1% increase in 2021 and then 2% thereafter. And then business and occupation tax, it had been growing by about 4%, but we're taking a little bit more of a conservative approach, growing that by 2% each year. And then utility tax, we're following the declines that we've seen for the respective utilities, so I don't have an across-the-board projection on that. And then in terms of departmental revenues, estimating a 1% increase each year. When you roll all that together, we would see an average annual increase of revenues of about 1.5%. Meanwhile, on the expenditure side, past pattern has shown that expenditures, these are basic expenditures, not adding new services and programs, increase roughly 3% a year. So if you do that, that's the source of the structural imbalance, the difference between the 1.5% in revenue growth versus the 3% in expenditure growth. In terms of modeling out how the forecast is cumulative, if you look at the green bar on the left, that is what we're forecasting, the shortfall to be for both 2020 and 2021. If the white section in the middle models out what would happen if we were able to close the 2020 shortfall using ongoing budget changes, and for example's sake, this does not represent any decisions about what we are going to be proposing, but for example's sake, if you close the 2020 gap with 1.7 of new revenues and 3.5 million, I'm sorry, did I say 1.7%? I meant 1.7 million. 1.7 million of revenues, 3.5 million of expenditure reductions, that would eliminate the $5.2 million gap. As you then roll that through the deficits in the out-years, rather than 6.3 million, for example, in 2021, it would reduce down to 1 million, and so on and so forth. So that's, those are the numbers themselves, but there are a number of other dynamics that keep me up at night and that have me wringing my hands. And we've got some of these items listed here, just so that everyone's going in eyes wide open. In terms of potential risks to the forecast, first and foremost is potential future weakness in the economy. Councilmember Winterstein, you spoke to this on sales tax. If the economy takes a dip, if we move into a recession, the forecast, not just sales tax, but, you know, BNO could be vulnerable, which is actually a nice segue also into REIT. REIT, real estate excess tax, is highly dependent on the health of the economy. Most jurisdictions use REIT revenues to support one-time capital investments to allow them, for them to respond to those fluctuations. In Issaquah, we're actually using a portion of our REIT revenues to support ongoing costs in our pavement management program. So that is an area of worry, that if we see a significant contraction in REIT, those ongoing costs related to pavement management would put pressure on the budget. During deliberations for the 2019 budget, I know our former city administrator, Moon, was having some conversations with all of you about concerns about the street, operating street capital and fleet funds, use of fund balance, and whether they were on a sustainable trajectory. We still have those concerns. We have reviewing those funds on our work program. Depending on what we find, there, again, may be some additional budget impacts. There have been rumblings that the state legislature is likely to cut the streamlined sales tax mitigation money that we have been receiving. This has actually been a declining revenue source over the years. We currently are getting about $400,000. If the state were to eliminate that, that would be a $400,000 hit to our budget. Going back to conversations on the transportation funding package, the Newport Way projects were, we've received $7 million of federal grants that are contingent on us getting those projects through right-of-way. If we are not able to get those projects through right-of-way, meaning, you know, identifying a revenue source to pay for those, the unfunded portions of those projects, we could be liable for having to return $7 million to the feds for that grant. We know there is a desire for council to implement the strategic plan. There are costs with that, and as we are facing these budget challenges, our ability to meet those commitments is challenged. And then the last item on this list is a need to strategically manage competing needs for new revenues, whether that's through the transportation program or revenues that may be needed to support ongoing operating costs. I think, you know, the council is mindful of people's ability and willingness to pay and that we don't have, we don't have an endless supply of new revenues. So how do we prioritize our many competing needs against both existing revenues and then if council had a desire to add new revenues, what would the priority be? In terms of the administration's plan for addressing the ongoing budget challenges, the administration is planning on proposing some, a small amount of funding in the 2020 budget to allow us to prioritize and align mandated and desired services with available resources, do some work on are we delivering those services in the most cost-effective manner possible, because we know we're not going to be able to continue doing, you know, basically, this is a little bit cliche, but business as usual, given our revenue picture. So what are the priorities of the community? What are the priorities of the council? And what can we be doing maybe to deliver services a little bit more efficiently? So that's going to be important work. It's time-consuming work, but as we start to look at the out-years, it's not just how do we get through the 2020 budget, but how do we position the government to be ready for 2021 and beyond? So that is going to be a priority item, both in the budget, but also work plan item for 2020. We also are going to continue our efforts to enhance our finance department operations so that we have the data that we need to provide you all information in a timely manner. I would argue that one of the reasons that we are, you know, facing these challenges that we're facing is that we haven't had, we haven't been able to get you that data. You know, and some of it we're doing, you know, we're doing, and we're doing it without additional resources, but some of it is really clunky, and it would be, it would be nice if we could provide you, us, all of us, with information in more timely, more timely manner. And then back to the last comment I made on the last slide about revenue options and competing needs, the administration would like to engage the council in discussion on those competing priorities. So last thing, and then I will stop talking. Just a number, some considerations I would point out as council prepares to review the 2020 budget. Our deficit is, our forecasted deficits are structural in nature in that expenditure growth over time is projected to exceed the growth rate on revenues. So we need to consider the ongoing impacts of budget decisions. Going back to a message I delivered earlier on sales tax, strength in sales tax has carried the budget in recent years, and as we see sales tax revenues decline, you know, do we need to consider alternative funding sources or scale-back services to meet that new reality? And then the last, the last thought I would offer all of you is, as we're going to be issuing debt later this year to support the Southeast 43rd project that you all adopted in the capital improvement plan, this will be the first time that we are going to the bond market since 2014, which will require us to go before the bond rating agencies. In that intervening period, we've had a series of audit findings that the rating agencies will likely be concerned about. So as I think about going to the rating agencies, what's, what is going to help me make an argument to retain our AAA rating is hanging on to that fund balance. And to the extent that I can argue that we've got a strong fund balance or a government that is willing to make decisions to address our budget challenges, you know, I can't make any guarantees, but that's, that, those are arguments that will, will help, will help strengthen our position as we're going before the bond rating agencies, because we want to show them we're not, we're not a risk. And, you know, I think past practice has shown that we have managed our budget, we have, you know, we have built and maintained our fund balances, but as we go in, as we go into what will be a difficult budget year, just, you know, want you all to keep that in mind.
So what's the timing? I'm sorry.
To go to the bond rating agencies?
Yes.
Likely December.
So likely after we're done making the sausage?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And with that, I am done.
Are you looking for anything from us?
No.
Okay.
This is, this was background information.
Prepping us for the budget?
For the budget.
Okay.
You know, certainly if there are additional questions, you know, let me know now, let us know afterwards. I know we've shared a lot of information with you all tonight and given you a lot to think about, so if you've got questions after this meeting, you know where to find me.
Sure. So I think a time for additional council questions, council comments, and then I, we have a, we have a lot of folks here. I think most of them are city staff, but if they're, then I think we should allow for any comment from anybody from the public that might be here and would like to make comments. Okay, Councilmember Winterstein?
Could you go back four slides? What are you willing to tell me about the 1.7?
That I made it up. I, I, you want to know what my thinking was? I'm like, okay, well, I can't do 50/50 because that's going to look ridiculous. So I did... So I did it, I believe, one-third, two-thirds.
And you thought maybe from where, how?
I literally did one-third, two-thirds. I started 50/50, and I'm like, God.
So you don't have, this isn't based upon proposal we're going to see?
No.
It's just a number?
It's just a number.
Interesting, Beth.
You don't believe me. I mean, I literally.
Okay. I just thought if the administration would come forward with some new revenue, I told you a moment ago, I wasn't interested in that. I'd like to just get it out on the table right now, what you might have been, what you might be thinking about. I mean, there's a number there, and I just thought I'd ask.
It's one-third.
So I think in a previous slide, Beth showed revenues, possible future revenues that we are examining, and so those revenues are outlined. I'm sorry, I don't remember what slide they're in, but those are all things that we're looking at. The budget is still very much in formation, hasn't, we haven't come to nearly a final state on that. And so I think, as Beth said, those are all revenues that we are examining, taking a look at, seeing, coming up with perhaps a revenue package that might be of interest to council.
Got it. Any more information about the 3.5 then? Or is it just two-thirds?
Two-thirds. But we're scrubbing the budgets. Work is ongoing, underway. Our budget team, who I should acknowledge here, they're working their tails off, working very closely with the departments who are all here. There are difficult discussions that we have been having, very difficult.
Right. I know that the numbers that you showed for revenue forecast didn't, I'm not really sure if it included a 1.7 or not.
It did not.
Okay.
It did not.
So I've heard talk before about BNO, and that was on the table many years ago. The administration at that time actually proposed a two-step increase. We said no to the second, we adopted the first, and we've had those rates ever since. As we know, that hits the business community. Now, we are also on a path to potentially ask our citizens to increase sales tax. That has an effect as well.
Correct.
And so my first thinking is, I really hope you're not thinking about BNO. And the second one, I know there's been a lot of talk about utility. You pointed it out, you pointed that out earlier, how, and I've heard that, that's come up over the years. Hey, you know, we really don't do anything on the utility side. We do very little on the utility side. You showed the numbers, 1, 0, and 0, I think.
1% on cable, 2.33 on water, and then 0 on sewer and 0 on stormwater.
Right. Okay. And so, I mean, that's the only one I've heard that's currently 0. I'm just, so Andrea, you said earlier you had a list of them. I'm assuming those are the areas you're going to be looking.
Councilmember Ray?
So not a happy story, and maybe we can have a happy ending, but it was a well-told story, Beth. So to you and your team, nice job. This was well-laid out and very understandable, and so I appreciate that. And kind of on a different tack, I think our biggest challenge right now is getting a good handle on our financial systems. I don't think we're going to be capable of achieving any of our strategic goals if we don't understand where we sit financially. So whatever it takes, in my estimation, to make it so we have a robust financial system that gives us frequent information so we can continually sense and adapt and change to this dynamic environment is going to really help us a lot. And I think we've been very fortunate in the last several years to have had this robust sales tax growth, and we have not had to make some of the tough decisions that many of our sister cities have. And so reality is just starting to dawn us, but thank you. I think the story was well-told.
I agree with that. Thank you very much. As not fun as the story is, shedding light and lifting up some of those rocks, I really, really appreciate that. The slide we're talking about to follow up on Councilmember Winterstein's comments on this slide, and the 1.7 and the 3.5 in expenditures reduction, my sense of this slide is to just shed light on the fact that we'll need to deal with it in some way, some combination of revenue, increased revenues and reduced expenditures. And if you have less revenue, you're going to have to have more expenditures, otherwise the out-years are going to be worse. I'm not ready to say that I wouldn't support, this is just my general feedback, not ready to say I wouldn't support any revenue increases. And I think if proposals are brought to the council, what I would like to see is information about what cities, other cities in our area are collecting. Because it's my feeling that if other cities are collecting certain revenues that we're not collecting, our rates are lower, but it's routine for many other cities, then we're falling, needlessly falling behind. Because you're not going to move out of Issaquah to anywhere significantly less expensive, anywhere close to us, and think that you're going to save a lot of money. And so I think there's probably some opportunities there, but I would want to know how it measures up with other surrounding cities. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh?
Similarly on that, I'm always interested in what other cities are doing on the revenue side. I'm also interested in who it affects, and just thinking ahead, utility taxes are going to more prominently affect someone with a fixed or low income. And so I think that's something for us to consider as we're looking into it, and so keeping that in mind is essential.
Anyone else? Or we go for public comment? Is there anybody here who would like to make any comments on this? No? All right, final call. None, I see none. I see three people here who are members of the public, and I understand why they're not commenting. And I appreciate that. Anyway, anything else? Nothing for good of the order? And wow, you really are adjourned. All right. Thank you.